Calling to order, the March 6th City Council meeting. All please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business will be the roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Sattell.
Here.
Councilmember Westy.
Here.
Councilmember Grummer is absent. Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Heine.
Here.
Councilmember Luther.
Aye.
Councilmember Norris.
Here.
Councilmember Hood.
Here.
Here, aye.
We have a quorum, seven council members present, one absent. We're down to item number D on the agenda. Agenda approval?
Blue approval.
Second.
Approval was made by Councilmember Sattell, seconded by Councilmember Westy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay. I want to change the...
She's got her light on.
Okay.
Sorry. I want to move to table Bill 6410.
Second.
The motion is to table Bill Number 6410. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Roll call.
By a vote of six to one, Bill Number 64 is tabled for tonight's agenda. Next item on the agenda is E, public comments. Let me back up. Motion to pass the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Patel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Your agenda is approved for this evening. Next item on the agenda is letter E, public comments. We have a few cards here. The first one, Mark Barnhart. Please come forward. Please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Mark Barnhart. I'm with Patinville Fire District. The address is 13900 St. Charles Rock Road.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Excellent. So I'm here on behalf of Patinville Fire District to notify the council, as well as the community, that Patinville Fire District will have a no-tax increase bond issue on the April 4th ballot.
Second.
April 2nd, sorry. April 2nd ballot. This is a no-tax increase bond issue. The bond issue will be used for facilities, fleet, fire and rescue tools and equipment, EMS equipment, public education equipment, and just a little bit about the 2008 no-tax... or I'm sorry, the new, the 2008 bond issue. Whenever we ran that, Bridgeton was an ISO 3, and Maryland Heights was an ISO 4. That's an evaluation from an outside organization. And with the investment from 2008, we were able to achieve an ISO 1. If anyone asks you about anything, we would just ask that you refer your constituents to the fire department. So whatever decision they make to vote, that they make an educated decision. Also, while I'm here, I'm our public education person. We do have a baby safety class tomorrow at Bridgeton Community Center. It starts at 6:00 PM. If you have anyone who could benefit from that, please let them know. We would love to have them.
One thing.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a phone number that they could call?
Yes, they can call 314-739-3118 and ask to speak with Chief Jim Usri. He's tied up tonight, so I'm here on his behalf.
Very good. Thank you, Mark.
Excellent. Thank you all for the time.
Appreciate it. Next up is Patricia Bland.
Hi, Patricia Bland, 3301 Greenbridge Drive, Bridgeton, Mo. I am here today also for some things that are on the ballot on April 2nd, 2024, the proposed charter amendments. So first, I just want to thank the administration and the staff and all of the employees of the city for all the work that they do. It's through you guys that we get to enjoy a wonderful city. Second, I want to thank the council, not just for your service, but also for listening to some of the members of the Bridgeton's Charter Review and Revision Commission following the April 2023 election, where we had these same ballot initiatives sitting on our ballots. I thank you for putting them back in front of the people again and for not letting them just kind of slip to the side. If you don't know, I was a member of that Charter Review and Revision Commission. I was very disappointed with 2023 results, in case you didn't hear me speak several months ago about that. But I just wanted to point out that our charter has not been significantly revised since 1966, since its inception. Good diligence would say you should look at that every 10 years or so and should keep it current with modern times. We have not done that, and we need to do so. I want to also just point out that the commission worked with lots of people. We worked with our mayor. We worked with the staff. We worked with council that was hired by the city to walk us through that process. We would like to just make sure everybody knows the city is actually going to be putting on an informational town hall meeting, March 18th, at 6:30, Bridgeton Recreation Center. It will be a panel town hall meeting, where we will have John Young, our council, who helped us through that process. We will have members of the CRRC, that's what we called ourselves, myself, our chairperson, Jessica Perkins, Anthony Banks, and a few others, who can answer questions from the public. And we just want, like our lovely fire department, people to understand the information behind these proposed amendments, so that they can make that informed decision. You know, the final report that we put together is still out there on the city's website. I'll say it's a little hard to find, so if we could, I don't know, make a way that it's a little bit easier to find because it got buried in that document center. But if you look for final reports, it pops up as one of the first things. So if you're interested to see our full recommendation report that was put together, that's there. So again, March 18th, we'd love to see the public there so that they could ask their questions and learn a little bit more about those proposed amendments and how we can keep our city up with the times. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. We're down to item number... Okay, thank you. We're down to item number G, appointments, presentations, proclamations, announcements. We have none this evening? Approval of the amendments. Letter F?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Hood made the motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Patel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any changes, suggestions?
Friendly amendments?
Okay, all in favor of the approved amendments, say aye.
Aye.
They passed by a vote of seven to nothing. Next item, appointments, presentations, proclamations, announcements. We have none this evening. We have no consideration of resolutions. We have no public hearings. We have no permits waivers, appeal request, no emergency legislation, no consideration of new bills. We're down to discussion items. Anybody have any discussion items? Okay, I see none. The attorneys report.
I have nothing to report, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff reports. Council communications. Let's start with Councilmember Westy.
I have nothing at the time.
Councilmember Sattell.
I really don't have anything, except I'm your new councilman with a new haircut, so that's it. That's all.
Councilmember Patel.
Thank you. First of all, I do want to thank everybody for being here, and I want to thank Patricia for being able to be a part of that informational meeting. So I appreciate that, and I hope all the residents do go. And it's her birthday today, so happy birthday, Patricia.
Councilmember Luther?
All right then. I have a couple of things. One is that, thank you, Acting Mayor Heine. The, I was contacted by, several of us were contacted by a representative from Gateway Rivers Greenway. And I called this gentleman back to learn more, and I said, "I'm speaking as a resident, not as a councilperson." The, this organization is, if you're not familiar with it, they have greenways all over the place in St. Louis County and beyond. I think in St. Charles County as well. And they are going on a listening tour through North County to see if there is interest in a project in North County, in our neighbor, in our neighboring communities. So I had lots of questions. I said, "I'm speaking as a resident. As a council member, we need a lot more information, a lot more input, and a lot more firmality with consensus." But I asked a lot of questions about accessibility, about safety, about maintenance, about funding, and I had no answers. Then I was told I was the first person this individual had talked to on this listening tour. So I said, "Well, with that, we're looking for, I'm looking forward to, as a resident, to getting more information. So you might be reading and seeing more about that, and there's more to come on that. And if that's a good project, I'm sure it would come before council." But I thought it was interesting and intriguing at the very least, but lots more information to get about that. Wanted to also mention, attended the Polar Plunge. I don't know if I mentioned it to the last meeting or not. No, it's more recent. Which was a lot of fun. I'm looking at you, Chief Masari. Team nine, right? Team number nine took the plunge. I have a video of that. My gosh, you cannot believe the number of people that come out for that. How much money was raised for that? Over some crazy amount.
Hundred and ten.
Hundred, yeah. Oh, wonderful turnout. It was great to see a lot of our fellow council members were there and staff, and your family was there. It was great, great community activity at Creve Court. Wanted to give a quick update on the COE, Code Ordnance Violation Enforcement Subcommittee. We just had a meeting tonight. We've had some delays with meetings. And obviously, a lot's been happening over the past month, but I wanted to let you know, if you didn't know, we're moving ahead with a community meeting. This is something we discussed with Terry and with other members of staff that would bring together, to discuss the importance of complying with ordinances, with a particular focus on our residential, the residential section of Bridgeton. We know there's the commercial section, and we've got apartment buildings, but we really wanted to talk about the neighborhoods and the single-family homes, those neighborhoods. So one of the things we'd like to do is gather a group, including representatives from HOAs and other neighborhood organizations, to talk about the process for code enforcement violation and really to develop some grassroots momentum for ordinance awareness and compliance. So that's still going on. That was something that we talked about several months ago with Terry's blessing, former Mayor Briggs' blessing, and that looks like something we're committed to and probably doing over the summer. We'd hope to do something in the spring. So that is still a project underway. So we might ask for your help in getting that together. We want to get as many people involved as possible. And if it goes well, we talked about extending that for something similar for businesses and other organizations in the city of Bridgeton. So very focused on ordinance compliance and keeping our neighborhoods attractive and safe. And last, I just want to say, it's, a lot's happened over the past several weeks, and I thanked a bunch of people last time. I'm going to thank a bunch of people this time. First, Acting Mayor Randy Heine for stepping up and moving into this role. Want to thank Kevin Bookout. I think, Kevin, you have really shown your mettle, keeping the day-to-day operations going. It's, when things are quiet, things are good, but some things are underappreciated. So things are quiet, they're good, and you're appreciated. Also, to directors that are here this evening for all of your fine work, it's noticed, it's mentioned. We didn't lose a beat when we lost Terry, and that's an honor and tribute to him as well. And I also, I see somebody out there, my new friend, the Clay Dean, our new ordinance enforcement officer. I want to thank you for very quickly responding to residents' concerns that I passed your way. Honestly, they really are resident concerns. I'm not saying that because they're coming from me. So, and I know you've gotten above and beyond a few times, so thank you very much. Thanks.
Very good. Councilmember Norris.
All right, thank you. I don't have the 20 minutes that some have accused me of, but I do also want to thank to all the staff for continuing your job duties for residents and businesses of the city of Bridgeton during this difficult time. I appreciate and respect your devotion to our city that I love. Thanks again. I also attended the Polar Plunge on February 24th. That was the largest crowd that I've been. I had to shuttle on a school bus. I didn't know where, you know, I mean, there was crowds everywhere. So that is a great to this organization, and so glad that we were able to collect this kind of money for great Special Olympics. And just a little news, the Kiwanis Club of Bridgeton will host their annual pancake breakfast at the Bridgeton Recreation Center on March 24th from 7:30 to 12:30. Adult ticket prices are 10, children, 5 to 12, are 5, and I do appreciate your support. I do have tickets if you would like some, and take care to all.
Thank you. Councilmember Hood?
Yes, I would just like to relate a story that was brought to my attention about how well the Patinville Fire District handled an unfortunate situation with one of our residents. He had a horse go down and couldn't get it back up. And Patinville Fire actually responded and worked trying to get that horse up. Now, unfortunately, it passed, but you don't hear stories like that. I mean, they get blamed for getting the cat out of the tree, but the time that they spent was very much appreciated by this resident, and they need an attaboy for that.
Thank you.
Acting Mayor Heine, may I make an amended amendment to my report? Real quick.
Councilmember Luther?
Yes, sorry, before we, I want to, I left two people out to thank, and that's Dave Leonard-Broker and Karen Robinson.
Thank you. All right, we're down to staff reports. I'm going to start with Mr. Gunn this evening, Public Works.
Bear with me. I need to pull up a little picture. Let's see, full screen mode. All right, early in the week, we got a call from the water company. Over the next couple of weeks, they're going to be sending out a lot of letters to one of our subdivisions that is going to get a complete upgrade or replacement of their existing water lines. They're going to go from a 6-inch up to an 8-inch line. The bad news, and we've been in discussion with them the last couple of days, is because these were, the streets are going to get the new lines. They're going to be Taylor, Burgess, Brookford, Oakberry, Haas, Springfield, Wishire, and Berkestone. Reason why it's an issue is because last summer, we did all these slabs on the streets. So before we get too far along down the road, as far as the residents getting the letters from the water company and they go out and start marking all, we did a million dollars of work in this area last summer. This was not anyone's fault in a sense where the water company sends out letters every January, February, and looks at their three- to five-year look ahead for their water main replacements. This year, because of some issues with the Public Service Commission, they're being mandated because of some complaints, and the Public Service Commission listened to the complaints, had the hearings, made a ruling that the water company has to replace all the lines in this neighborhood in 2024. So pretty much November, middle of November, I think it was right around the 20th, somebody went, came down, talked to a friend of mine and said, "Hey, look, you drop everything. You got to get on this." So the last several weeks, they've been pulling together plans, doing all the surveying since, on the end of November till now, to get the plans together, get everything bid out, to do the work in this neighborhood. So they broke the news to me on Monday, and we've been working with them because right now, the existing plans that they have show a lot of slabs coming out of the work that we just did. So we're working with them right now. We're overlaying the new stuff versus the existing plans that they've sent us, and we're going to try to get the minimum amount of damage or of work in the brand-new streets. Brookford, for all practical purposes, is 100% new, and there's a line going right down the middle of it, which means every slab comes back out. So we're working with the water company. We're working with the staff to go ahead and try to minimize this. Right now, the Betterment is, or the Silver Linings are getting all new water lines. The bad news is, we're back in the same subdivision again this summer, so. Once again, not anyone's fault, other than Public Service Commission. Those are the people that got us this time. I wish they would have said, "Hey, you have to replace it in five years or 10 years," but they mandated that work has to be started in 2024. So that's where we're at right now. So you might see a lot of questions. You might see letters being sent out in the next week or two, or you might see some marks on the pavement, but that work is coming. On a bright note, the contractor this year is doing really good. If it wasn't for Mother Nature giving us a little bit of rain on Sunday, and then that scared them. They didn't do anything on Monday, and then the rain's going to get us part of the day tomorrow and pretty much all Friday. So the plan right now is they're going to be pouring early in the morning and probably stopping right around noon, and then we'll just get ready for the deluge of rain we're going to have Thursday into Friday. And then that puts us really close to about 70% done. So we're only looking at another two weeks, as long as Mother Nature cooperates, and we'll be finished with this project. That's all I have.
Robert, I think there's some lights. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Westy to begin with.
Thank you very much. Are we going to be responsible for paying for this, or with the water company? And is this going to impact the elementary school at all?
They'll have to work with the elementary school. We did talk about our contract last year. We worked with the principal. He told us the dates that would work best for him, and that was written into the contract. So I would recommend the water company, they're passing that along to their service people, that they work with the staff there and come up with a really good time to put that new line in, so it won't impact the buses. And we will not be paying for the pavement. That's something the water company has to put back.
Are we going to be able to make sure that it's going to be the same quality that we ended up?
We're working on that right now, because if you remember, we put in 8-inch-thick concrete. Other cities put in lesser amounts, and of course, water company wants to go with the lesser amount, and we told them it's got to be in kind with what we currently have, and we're still working on that right now.
If we end up having pushback from them, what are our options?
I think I'll be calling Mr. Leonard-Broker at that point.
That's kind of where I was going. Are we able to try and...
He writes a very good letter, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm going to recognize Councilmember Norris next.
Oh, this is a great, not a good surprise for my, you know, subdivision. I mean, they were so excited about the work done, so now you're telling me... And I'm real worried about, I know the school, but the schools only have about another month or so, so I'm, you know, I'm not happy about it. But Brookford is our main entrance to our Bridgeway Park, so will that be completely torn up? Do you have any idea when that and how long, or you have nothing right now?
I just found out about the project, and right now, Brookford is getting a brand-new line. And because that road is so narrow, they're putting it right down the center line, which means every slab is getting torn out, and we just replaced that, pretty much that whole street. So we're working with them to come up with a better plan or some timelines, because the first question we had was any kind of impacts to the school.
Right. Well, I said, "I know we have another entrance there, but they'd have to, you know, is coming off a Haas, so I don't know if we can use that." And, you know, I mean, it's not a through thing, but I don't know if we can put a temporary situation to get up to the park, but we'll have to talk about that, so, anyway. Thank you, Robert.
Councilmember Luther?
Yes. Mr. Gunn, is there any way that we could, that you could procure a copy of the letter going to residents? So we know what they're getting, just so we have that as a reference?
Sure, I can ask for that.
Thank you very much.
Back to Councilmember Westy.
Sorry about the follow-up question here. Since it's in the middle of the road right now, are they going to have to put it back in the middle? Or could we request that they try and put it towards one of the sides? That way, in the future, when this happens again, which I'm assuming it will eventually, we're not going to be in the same situation where they're destroying the entire roadway.
And we talked about that. Right now, because of such a large, especially on Taylor, there's a lot of fiber on both sides of the road right now. So the water company is trying to go down the middle of the street where it's the safest. Now, that's bad for us, because whenever they're doing work, it means our street's impacted. But there were, everybody's always worried about hitting fiber, it seems like. So right now, especially on major streets or major connector streets, you're going to see a lot of utilities being in that sidewalk area. So these utility companies are trying to shy away from that right now.
Thank you.
Next is Councilmember Sattell.
Thank you. Couple of questions. Could they sawcut the whole center, make it a 3-slabbed street?
We replace, we replace same-sized slabs. We don't get involved in doing half-slabs or anything like that.
That's the first question. The other one is like, just this weekend, I was over there coming from Bridgeway Park over to Haas. It's like, there's not even any sidewalks. You got to take your bike and jump the curbs and go around the gates and everything. Is there any way we can get sidewalk, I mean, you just redid that park, but it didn't have, didn't connect the sidewalk.
Without a lot of easements, and this is strictly a water main project, we're not going to be adding sidewalks. Not right now. Yeah, Parks Department, I would definitely go down, yeah.
Okay, back to Councilmember Luther.
Yes, you may have said this. When is the letter going out?
They would like the letter to go out like last week, it sounded like. They're in a big push right now, just because everybody's always worried about something or the fallout of not abiding by this new agreement they have. So it, once we talk with them a little bit more and get the plans a little bit more adjusted, I would imagine in the next two weeks, you'll see the letter going out.
Thank you, Robert.
Very good. Next would be Parks, Brendan Kane.
Just wanted to mention that the Berry Hill Golf Course opened last Friday. Had a very busy opening weekend. It's very rare you have 60s and 70s that first weekend in March, so we were pretty happy to see that. The new irrigation system is fully operational, so things are off to a good start at Berry Hill. As far as staffing goes, we are receiving a lot more applications now as the weather starts to get nicer. That's kind of the clue for kids to start getting their apps in for concession work and lifeguards. And so a lot of staff have been reviewing those, conducting interviews and making recommendations for hiring. And that'll continue throughout most of the spring and summer.
Very good. Oop, we got like, Councilmember Sattell?
Yes, well, Brendan, you heard my question about the sidewalks over there. How do we can get sidewalks connected for the park over to Haas Road? There's sidewalks on both sides, but you got to jump curbs in the parking lot to get there from the new park area. Even if you come down through Ermen, you know, to get over to there, and it's not linked. I mean, I guess they just didn't put that into design. Are we done with the design? Or is that still a work in progress over there to finish up the park?
Yeah, there was initially some stairs, a connection to get up to the park from the Haas parking lot. That was during the planning phase and the design phase. That was removed from the plans. So we do not have any plans right now as far as any sort of stairway. Now, if we want to look at something as a result of the potential closure at Brookford there, I mean, we can, we can look into that, but there's no plans right now.
Okay, I mean, we're going to need to have a sidewalk access from Burgess, you know, coming to the park. The other access does, a sidewalk that comes from Ermen, that you can come over on pedestrians or bicycles. And I notice that's, you have trouble cutting through that area right now without, you can drive across the grass and jump curbs. I just wanted to address that, so, thank you.
Next, Chief Masari.
Thank you. Just wanted to let everybody know on the Polar Plunge. Appreciate everybody that contributed or participated in that event. The overall event did pull in about $110,000. We were over $4,000 in what we had drawn from our team and had over 16 plungers. So appreciate that, that participation. Also, I wanted to, just a reminder of the St. Louis Area Police Chiefs Association, the 32nd Annual Police Officer Memorial Breakfast, Tuesday, May 14th. The program begins at 8. It's at the St. Charles Convention Center. But those council members that are interested in attending that, please get ahold of Julie in my office to get a seat reserved. You can call her or just email me, and I could get it to her, but we want to get those seats reserved as soon as possible, so. But we want to get those seats reserved as soon as possible, so that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Bookout. I know Mr. Bookout has been under the weather since late last week, and I wish him well and hope he feels better. Okay, Mayor's Report. I attended the Westlake Landfill Meeting last week, sponsored by the Just Moms STL, great group. I've been attending meetings with them that they've sponsored probably since 2010 or 11. I don't think we would be where we are without them, so I really give them a lot of credit. They did say that we're going to be hearing shortly from the EPA regarding a plan of remediation. They, they seem to think it's going to be 90% complete. That should be later this week or next week, we'll be hearing something. And I believe currently, you've probably seen them on Facebook. They're in Washington right now working for the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act bill sponsored by Senator Josh Hawley. So thank you, Moms. I appreciate that. Thank you, audience, constituents, for being here. It's always nice to see people taking interest in their city government. And I attended the staff meeting last Friday with the department heads and, and our city administrator, Kevin Bookout. I'll tell you what I told them. It's been a hectic three weeks at this point, but I'm happy with the way the city is running. This is a testament to our employees and their training and their readiness to get the job done in the light of adversity. So a great big hand for our employees and our department heads for keeping things going on track. Thank you. I think we should all offer continued support and prayers to Terry's wife Lori and their children and grandchildren. I want to thank his family for allowing us to have Terry for the time that we did here. God bless Terry. With that, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Patel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? We're adjourned. Thank you.